Let's go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Trenton Magid, David Roseacher, Jeffrey Moore, Michael Pate, Patrick Morris, Christine Carnes, our Vice Chair is absent today. And I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslow. Is Dave not here yet? We want to welcome Dave back from an illness and we're happy to have him back. Dave Fanslow, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff of the Mayor's Office, Sherry Rockwell, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Eric England, Planning Manager, Mike Carter, Planning Board Administrator, Alan Thielen from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agans, our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are on the table located right here in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick up one. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please, if you take time now to turn your cellphones off, that would be appreciated. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Re-zoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found on the northeast wall of this room. And we do not have any changes to the consent agenda, so I'm going to go ahead and get started with the reading of the consent cases. First case, Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-7-16-100. Applicant: Relevant Community Church, care of Corey Nelson. This is on for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in a R4 district. Portions of the property is located in a flood fringe overlay district. This was laid over from the November 7th meeting. Location: 21220 Elkhorn Drive. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none, I'll move on. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-12-18-268. Applicant: Sean Nagus. This is on for layover. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Stone Arch Creek, a subdivision located outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-84D lot frontage, Section 53-93 street surfacing, and Section 53-99 sidewalks. Property is located in the ED North Hills Environmental Resource Overlay District. Location: 13909 North 64th Plaza. Does anyone wish to have this? I figured you were here. We will remove that. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-10-18-269. Applicant: Magnum Development Corporation. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Pacific Street West Replat 15, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from DR and MU to DR and MU. Location: Northwest of 203rd and Pierce Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-18-275. Applicant: Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes Omaha. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Lakeview 168, a subdivision located outside the city limits with a waiver of Section 53-99 sidewalks, along with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Southwest of 168th and Ida Streets. Anyone wish to have this removed? We do? Okay. Sorry about that. Didn't see ya. It will be removed? Okay. If you want to give public testimony, sir, then we would have to remove it from the consent agenda. Do you want it removed? Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-18-277. Applicant: 204th Street LLC, Attention Mark Allen. This is on for layover. Request: Revised preliminary plat approval of Town Center West, a subdivision outside the city limits with waivers to Section 53-99 sidewalks and Section 53-82B cul-de-sac length, along with rezoning from AG to MU, and final plat approval of Town Center West lots 1 through 5 and outlots A through B, a subdivision outside the city limits with a rezoning from AG to MU. Location: Northwest of 204th Street and West Center Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-18-280. Applicant: Leslie Christensen. It's on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to NBD. Property is located in ACI 1 Overlay District. Location: 1935 South 13th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, moving on. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-11-18-279. Applicant: Ali Pointer Machado, Architecture. It's on for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location: Southeast of 15th and Spring Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-8-18-282. Applicant: Tim Jacoby. It's on for approval. Request: Request to allow a heliport temporary in a CC district. Property is located in an ACI 2 Overlay District. Location: 8501 West Dodge Road. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-14-18-258. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on for layover. Request: Vacation of an irregular portion of a right-of-way abutting lots 2 and 3, Block 5, South Omaha, Second Edition, and Lot 16, Block 2, St. Mary's Edition, abutting 3221 R Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-14-18-259. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on for layover. Request: Vacation of the north-south alley from Haskell Street to Spring Street between 4th and 5th Streets, abutting lots 3 through 5, 7, 9 through 12, and 7 through 26, Block 6, Main's Edition. Anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-14-18-261. Applicant: Adjacent Property Owner. This is on for approval. Request: Vacation of Davenport Street from 24th Street to 25th Street, along with a portion of alley located in Block 2, Reed's First Edition. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One, Case C-14-18-262. Applicant: Adjacent Property Owner. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of Bridge Street and Hunt Street east of 36th Street, adjacent to blocks 171 and 174, Florence, 9201 North 36th Street. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two, Case C-14-18-263. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on for layover. Request: Vacation of the remaining portion of the east-west alley, east of 51st Street, between Walnut and Hickory Streets, abutting lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 28, West Side Edition. Does anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda Item Number Twenty-Three, Case C-14-18-264. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on for layover. Request: Vacation of 57th Street, south of Haskell Street, abutting lots 5 and 6, Schwab's Third Edition, along with the strip of land dedicated to the city, abutting lots 2, 8, and 9, Block 8, Patterson's Park. Anyone wish to have this removed from consent? You do? And finally, Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four, Case C-14-18-265. Applicant: Planning Board. It is on for approval. Request: Vacation of B Street, generally west of the west right-of-way line of 28th Street, abutting Lot 12, Block 15, South Omaha City lots, Lot 12, Block 7, South Omaha City lots, and Lot 1, South Omaha Replat 5. Does anyone wish to have this removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Those are the consent cases. Do we have a motion from the Board for those on for approval?
I'll move for approval of cases number nine, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-four.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Sure. Mr. Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Do we have a motion for those cases on for layover?
A motion for layover of Agenda Items Number Four, Thirteen, Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty-Two. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Roseacker?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Those cases that we just read, unless you pulled them off of the consent agenda, they are completed for the day. If you were here for one of those cases, you can stick around and watch, or you're free to leave the premises. Okay, we're going to move forward. We got two cases on administrative only, which means there will not be an opportunity for public testimony on these first two cases. Agenda Item Number One, Case C-12-18-217. Applicant: Courtyard on Park LLC. Request: Final plat approval of Courtyard on Park, a subdivision inside the city limits. Location: 1007 Park Avenue. Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. This request for final plat is before you for Courtyard on Park for 12 residential lots and two outlots. The preliminary plat, along with tax increment financing and a PUR overlay district, were previously recommended for approval by the Planning Board. The preliminary plat was also approved by City Council at yesterday's meeting. Just one minor item that needs to be addressed before going to City Council. Outlot B must be revised to provide some frontage to Park Avenue. That, along with submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement, will be the two items that are needed. The city recommends approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions listed in your recommendation report being addressed prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the Board?
Move approval for the final plat, subject to the two conditions identified in the recommendations report.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Magid?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Let the record show that Trenton Magid has recused himself and left the chambers. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-17-240. Applicant: NP Dodge Building Company. Request: Final plat approval of Arbor Woods, a subdivision inside the city limits with rezoning from DR to DR, R4, and R6. Property is located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. Location: 9300 Arbor Street. May we hear from the city? Eric?
Sure. Before us is the final plat request for Arbor Woods. This case has gone through a number of hearings. The Planning Board has previously recommended approval of the preliminary plat, rezoning, and PUD. City Council has also approved the preliminary plat at January 9, 2018, meeting. At the November 8th meeting just last month, the Zoning Board of Appeals also approved a few waivers in conjunction with the PUD. So the request before us is just for the final plat. The applicant has adequately addressed conditions such as an acceptable floodplain development permit and a final wetlands analysis. There are two small items that will need to be addressed prior to going to City Council, including final approval of a trail location from the Papio Missouri River NRD and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement. The city recommends, just to reiterate, the zoning, approval of the rezoning from DR to DR, R4, and R6, subject to the approval of an acceptable finalized PUD planned unit development overlay district, and approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions listed in the recommendation report prior to the request being forwarded to City Council.
Thank you, Eric. Any comments or questions of the Board? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for the approval of rezoning from DR to DR, R4, and R6, subject to the approval of an acceptable finalized PUD planned unit development overlay district, and approval of the final plat, subject to the following two conditions: Final approval from Papio Missouri River NRD, and submittal on a final acceptable subdivision agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Roseacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on. We're going to take Cases Three and Six together. I'll read Agenda Items Number Three and Six. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-3-18-238. Applicant: Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the Ashton Building TIF redevelopment project plan. This was laid over from the November 7th meeting. Location: 1218 Nicholas Street. And Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-3-18-267. Applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of the Millwork Commons redevelopment plan. Location: Generally bound by Seward Street on the north, 11th Street on the east, Nicholas and Izzard Streets on the south, and the mid-block point between 13th and 14th Street on Don, just a second before you start. Let the record show that Trenton Magid has returned to the chambers. Okay? Don?
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. The Ashton Building is located in north downtown. Here's TD Ameritrade Stadium, just about three blocks to the north, north of Cummings at 12th and Nicholas. This is a historic brick building, fairly large, four stories, actually very large, 187,000 square feet. This building will be fully rehabilitated for office use, offices with full amenities, and will include first-floor commercial and retail uses as well. This rehabilitation project, TIF project, is really the first step in implementing a larger area redevelopment plan. The Millworks Common, Millwork Commons Plan, which is also on the Agenda Item Six, and you'll be hearing about in a moment, which is a fairly large, ambitious undertaking, and as is the Ashton Project itself. This project represents an investment of about $40 million in the building. The amount of TIF requested is $6,350,000. Would note that the applicants are also making use of both federal and state historic preservation tax credits. This project meets the criteria for the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the site, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan. We ask for your approval. Are you going to be asking for other proponents for this project?
I was just going to ask Jennifer Taylor if she wanted to come up first and talk about Six, and then we'll...
Okay.
If she wanted to present Agenda Item Number Six.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Board. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. As Don indicated, we are looking at this particular area, which is not well outlined here, but this is the Millwork Commons redevelopment area. Several years ago, in fact, over 10 or 15 years ago, the City of Omaha did a study of the north downtown area, and we've talked about it a couple of times with some recent redevelopment plans. But that study indicated there was a great deal of potential immediately adjacent to the, what is now the CHA Health Center and TD Ameritrade Park in north downtown Omaha. However, some of these areas have not seen quite the redevelopment that we've seen in other areas of north downtown, and this is one of them. So we are very excited to look forward to bringing some redevelopment to what we're calling the Millwork Commons redevelopment area. The Ashton Project, which Mr. Seaton mentioned, is part of this project, but what we look to do here is to create some additional office retail, multifamily, and mixed-use developments immediately adjacent to and north of TD Ameritrade and CHI Health Center. The current shape and condition of many of the buildings in this area, with the exception of a couple that are currently operating and under use, is, for the most part, average fare, too. Several of them are in poor condition. Many of them are vacant and definitely underutilized. So this is an area very near our downtown core, very near where we have many of our visitors that come and spend time in the City of Omaha. That is in dire need of redevelopment, so we're very excited to bring some potential projects forward. The redevelopment plan in front of you for Millwork Commons contains several current and potential redevelopment projects in the area. It also provides for city participation in some of these redevelopment projects through the installation of several streets, sidewalks, some sewer relocation, other public improvements that will be provided for by the city, as well as the potential for the construction operation of a public parking garage and the use of tax increment financing. So that will be the city's participation in several of these projects. But the plan before you represents an overall plan for the redevelopment area, and specific tax increment financing and other projects will come through as they are appropriate. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
What's the timeline for the possible redevelopment of this area?
We have the Ashton Project, which is also before you today, which is gonna start immediately, and then the next several projects that are identified in the redevelopment plan will come online over the next probably three to four years. We do have representatives from the developer to answer additional questions if you have any, but we're hoping to get many of these underway between now and, say, 2022, 23, 24.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions for Jennifer?
I will also note that the area does include not only a National Register Historic District, but also National Register Historic Buildings. The district, the Nicholas Street District, which is the buildings between 12th, on 12th here between Nicholas and Isard, was designated in 2009, and several of these buildings were designated in 2008. But those are National Register Buildings.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Don? From the board? If not, I'm gonna ask, are there any other proponents that wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Kendra Ringenberg. I'm the attorney for the developer, oh, sorry, 1318 North 187th Street. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents that wish to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, we've heard from the city, but do you wanna add anything?
Nope, just, I guess, for agenda item number three, for the Ashton Building TIF redevelopment project plan, the department, or the city recommends approval.
Okay, on agenda item number three, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, agenda item number six, Eric.
Yeah, for the Millwork Commons redevelopment plan, the city recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Don, Jennifer, thank you. We're gonna take agenda items number five and number 11 together. I'll read both of those agenda, those cases. Agenda item number five, KC 3-18-266. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of the River Crossing Phase 1A TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, southeast of 10th and Farnham Streets. Agenda item number 11, which is case C10-18-273. KC 12-18-274. Applicant Heinz Interests LP Brad Soderwall requests preliminary plat approval of Central Park East Replat 3, a subdivision located inside the city limits with the waiver of section 53-84D lot frontage, along with expansion of the ACI 1 Overlay District. Location, southeast of 10th and Farnham Streets. It's my understanding, Larry, you're gonna present kind of an overview of both those cases.
I am, indeed.
All right. And then we're gonna hear from Bridget.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for allowing that, because I think it makes more sense, because they're so integrated. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me today. On behalf of the applicant, or representative of the applicant, is Brad Soderwall. And then I want to introduce the rest of the development team. Then I'm gonna turn it over to Brad to introduce Heinz, to give you an idea of what they do and what types of projects they worked on in the various states and really around the world internationally. So with that, I have Bob Griffin of Airheart Griffin, the consulting engineers on this particular project. Then I also have my law partner, Brent Beller, here, who has worked very closely with this project as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brad to introduce Heinz, then I'm gonna get into the details of the project and the recommendation reports.
Thank you, Larry. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairperson and members of the board. My name is Brad Soderwall with Heinz Interests LP. Our Midwest Regional Office is in Chicago, Illinois, at 444 West Lake Street, Suite 2400. I am very pleased to be here today. Pleased to be here today to present to you, and I thought, if I could, just take a few minutes and explain a little bit about my organization, what we do, who we are, and then, and I'll turn it over to Larry from there. First, just wanna say I'm very thankful for the support that we've gotten from the mayor's office and the city departments, as well as city council. Over the past year, we've worked very hard and collaboratively to get to this point, so I appreciate all that effort. Heinz is a privately-held company. We were founded in 1957 by Gerald Heinz and have grown into a global real estate development company. We are in over 200 cities, 24 countries around the world, and something that has been infused in everything that we've done as an organization is really a focus on quality. So I wanted, I don't know if you can see this here, just, our number-one guiding principle as a firm, and I just wanna read it for emphasis, the Heinz standard represents the global real estate benchmark for value creation, integrity, services, and quality for all clients. And I've been with the firm now for almost 20 years, and I'm very proud to be a part of the organization based on the quality of work that we do around the cities around the world that we work in. So we are here today in front of you. Having been here before, we actually were the development managers for Union Pacific in their headquarters project that you know very well, completed in 2004. In addition, we're working right now with Mutual of Omaha to reimagine and redevelop their campus out in Midtown. So we know Omaha well, and we're excited to be back, and the project that we're gonna lay out for you is something that will have us here for many years to come. So again, thank you for your time. In terms of our overall experience, I'm just gonna run through, I won't go in detail here, but we have over 100 projects that we have, are currently under design or under construction, almost 900 completed developments totaling 250 million square feet. So we're a very experienced developer, and I'm pleased to be here, working on this important project. A couple other just quick images of some mixed-use projects that we are, have either completed here. This is an example, City Center in Washington DC, which is a mixed-use project that has been very successful and added tremendous energy to Washington DC. Couple more projects here. Lincoln Common in Chicago is another project that is under development currently, but again, a very vibrant redevelopment of an old hospital site that's in a terrific area, and we're bringing a ton of activity to that location. And finally, back in Washington DC, here's an example of a project, The Parks at Walter Reed, that we're in the process of developing. Just speaking a bit more on quality, as Larry will describe in more detail, what we're presenting today is really the first phase of a multi-phased, mixed-use project. The total investment for all phases is over $500 million. It's a significant project. It's gonna take, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years to really realize all of that development, but we're very, very excited to get it started here with this very first phase. The idea, and what you're gonna hear from Larry, is this first phase is so critical to the overall success of the project, because it's really creating that sense of place, that village-making that's so important for successful mixed-use projects. You can't just take multiple uses and sort of shove them together and expect that you're gonna, you're gonna create the synergy and the energy that we're looking to create. So really, we are creating that sense of place so that we can have a dynamic live-work-play location within the City of Omaha that is additive, that will be there forever, and really there as a connector between the wonderful Old Market and the riverfront, which is undergoing a transformation right now. So we think it's a great, a great time and a great location for this, for this opportunity. With that, I think I'll turn it over to Larry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. So as all of you know, this is the redevelopment of the, what was the former ConAgra campus. Kinda came up with this aerial photograph on my own, because I thought it, I thought it was important to kinda see what we're talking about here in relationship to the ConAgra campus. So what I did, and hopefully you can see it clear enough, is I drew a line around the outer limits of the preliminary plat that's before you today, just to see, so you can see the kind of general area that we're talking about. And then what I did is I highlighted those portions in yellow that are really subject to the redevelopment of the ConAgra campus. You'll notice that there are two lots that are, I colored blue-green. Those lots are part of the preliminary plat, but they are not part of the redevelopment, either now or in the future. Those buildings will remain intact, and they're currently occupied. This particular building, along with these two adjacent buildings, actually house what's left of ConAgra, which is actually pretty significant. There's approximately 1,200 employees that still work in these three buildings, and that will continue as well. And then this building, of course, is currently occupied and will continue to be occupied, will not be demolished or redeveloped. Then what I'm showing here is we have 10th Street on the western boundary, then we have Farnham Street on the northern boundary, and then what I showed in pink here is Harney Street. I think that's important to note, because Harney Street is where we're coming across and connecting Harney Street to 8th Street, and then connecting 8th Street between Farnham and Harney. And so you'll see that a little bit there, but it's important to know how that first phase impacts the existing ConAgra campus, so we can go back to that, and you can just kinda see that in relationship to the phasing plan and what's being proposed there. So as far as the recommendations we're seeking today, of course, we're seeking a recommendation regarding the preliminary plat, we're also seeking a recommendation regarding the extension or expansion of the ACI 1 Overlay District, which will now extend to all of the property that's included within this preliminary plat. The entire area is currently zoned CBD, so there's not a change in zoning. The zoning will stay the same as far as the base district zoning. So, which gets us to the project itself, within this area that we're talking about here that's outlined on this outer boundary of the preliminary plat. There's approximately 23 acres, and those 23 acres will be subdivided into 10 buildable lots and two outlots. The outlots are really for drainage and green spaces. The area highlighted in yellow will be comprised of multifamily housing, parking structure, commercial, retail uses. There's also a hotel that we'll get into a little bit more on the phasing plan, and then also there's this public pedestrian plaza that we talked about on Lot 10 that will be in the newly-extended Harney Street that we'll get into a little bit later and show the details of that. The overall concept, if you will, was really to tie this redevelopment into the Old Market area and really have an extension of that Old Market area to the Riverfront and Heartland of America Park. And at the same time, with the plaza space and the structures and the development being proposed, add an exciting, vibrant, mixed-use area to this part of downtown that connects, really, the Old Market with the Riverfront. So we're excited about that. The overall development will contain approximately 500,000 square feet of office space, 80,000 square feet of retail space. There's a proposed hotel, which will be probably a boutique hotel consisting of approximately 200 rooms, and then there'll be 900 new residences, which are comprised of both multifamily housing as well as a condominium concept or project where people will live. As far as the phasing of the development... This is the phasing plan. Again, Phase 1A, which is really the main part of what we're here today on the TIF, is this particular building shown here in orange. It's multifamily and retail. And then, of course, we have that Lot 10 that we talked about, which will contain the public open space, that will, open space in Plaza that will go from 10th Street to 9th Street. Then, of course, there'll be two lanes of traffic that will go from 9th to 8th Street, and we'll get into the details of that a little later. It is the northwestern corners at 10th and Farnham. And if you go back to, again, this aerial photograph, this really is kind of the main entrance into the ConAgra campus, as well as the parking structure, and this corporate building, which is known as Building Number One. Those will all be demolished as part of Phase 1A, so just so you can see. And then, of course, Harney Street that comes across here makes the extension to 8th, and then 8th between Harney and Farnham. So just so you can understand how that is all situated. Phase 1A will have approximately 375 multifamily units. It's a five-story building. The first floor of the building will consist of 42,000 square feet of commercial retail space on the streetscape, and so that will primarily be on the south side of the building, facing Harney, and on the west side of the building, facing 10th Street. There is also a 720-stall parking garage within this particular building, and that will serve the, not only the multifamily and the retail component of this particular building, but also there's 150 to 250 parking spaces that will be open to the general public. And I think this is important, because, as you all know, the Riverfront Revitalization Committee's been working on the extension of the Jean Leahy Mall, and people will need to park somewhere to actually enjoy that park area. So I think that's the city's interest in owning and constructing and managing the parking facility within this building. The building's about 680,000 square feet. I've got an exhibit here that shows the building. As you can see, the parking structure is located completely internal to the structure, so it's not visible from any of the public right-of-way, whether it's Farnham, 10th, Harney, or 8th Street. It's all internal. Obviously, you have your entrance points and exit points, but otherwise, you will not see the parking structure at all. It'll be completely encased within this building. Which brings me to the 38-foot-wide pedestrian plaza space between 10th Street and 9th Street. You'll notice that from 10th and 9th is 38 feet. It's a little wider than 9th to 8th Street, which then comes back into and narrows to just a two-lane vehicular way with sidewalks, of course, on both sides. And so we'll get into that in a little bit. I did wanna show you the proposed elevation. Now, this is the south side of the building, as it faces the newly-constructed Harney Street, and so this is conceptual at this point, but of course, the urban design code kicks in because of the ACI 1 overlay, and also because of the TIF being requested, so it has to meet all the urban design code requirements, which it will. The street level is where the retail is as well, and that's shown here, and then, of course, four stories above, but I wanted to give you an idea, conceptually, of how that particular building will look. The additional phases of the development include the hotel, which is shown here as Phase 1B. Then you have additional multifamily housing and retail, which is shown as Phase 2A here, and this is just on the south side of the newly-constructed or extended Harney Street. And then you have office space that is shown as 2B in this location. And then there's a public event space building that's shown here, which is Phase 2- And then there's a public event space building that's shown here, which is Phase 2C. And then there's additional office space that's shown as Phase 4A down here on Lot 8. And then the residential condominium concept or project is shown here as Phase 4B on Lot 6. And again, here are the two lots that are included within the plat, but will continue to be utilized in their current form and existence. As far as ConAgra Drive, that configuration will continue. That will remain in its current configuration. There is also an extension of a public street system here that connects ConAgra Drive with 9th Street to the southwest, so there'll be another connection point here. And we think the extension of the grid system from 10th to 8th Street is really important because it opens up that pedestrian vehicular corridor from the Old Market to the Heartland of America Park, which we think is a great asset and providing this interesting place is also going to fit in well, we believe, with the Old Market area. So, this is kind of a high-level exhibit that shows the opening of this pedestrian and vehicular corridor of the newly extended Harney Street from 10th to 8th. You know, there's the ConAgra Lake. This, of course, is Phase 1A, the apartment, retail, and parking facility. And then here is the main pedestrian public plaza space from 10th to 9th, shown here. This is an older drawing, but I wanted to show it to you anyway because I think, and now, what you notice here between this drawing is that it ends here at, from 10th to 9th as far as the larger width area. Now, it narrows then from 9th to 8th. This does not do that, but I think it's a great depiction of how this opens up the Old Market area to the lake and to the riverfront. As you can see down here, this is 10th Street, of course, and the ConAgra Lake. I labeled the different phases so you can recognize what those are, but again, Phase 1A, the event space building 2C, the office building 2B, the multifamily retail 2A, and then the hotel 1B, so you can kind of see that in relationship. I thought that was a good angle to really get an idea of how this is going to look. I've got some drawings of the kind of plaza, public open space. I mean, these are the kinds of things that we're expecting down there, of course, outdoor dining, seating, and just really creating a sense of place. There's another example. And then I think this is the example from the other side, and this is looking east to west, so you've got the lake here, and you're looking down towards the public plaza and open space, again, Phase 1, the office 2B, the 2C public event space, and then, of course, the additional multifamily and residential space here. But this all shows kind of the connection between 10th and 8th Street, which we think is going to be a great addition to the Old Market area. We did have a neighborhood meeting a while back, a couple of weeks ago in November, mid-November, and we had probably about 45 people there or so. We tried to send out as many notices as we could. We sent a 300-foot notice, and then we notified some additional people. We may have missed a couple of people, and we apologize about that, but we did want to go through these slides and let the public know what we're doing. Although this, as you know, has been highly publicized. There's been numerous newspaper articles surrounding this particular project and news stories as well, and we think it's been well-received. With respect to the preliminary plat and rezoning, which is just really the extension of the ACI-1 overlay, we reviewed the recommendation report and find the same acceptable. And, you know, just so you know, we've been working on the details of this particular development for over a year, and we've been working very closely with the various departments and with the mayor's office, and we appreciate all the time, effort, and attention that's been given to this particular project over the last year. And we've also been working with the Riverfront Revitalization Committee because there is some coordination and collaboration that had to occur between the ConAgra property and the Heinz Development, as well as what they're proposing as far as the extension of the Jean Leahy Mall down to the Riverfront. So, that brings us to our TIF issues, and I was just going to run through them because it's probably just as easy for me to get up here and talk about those things as the rest of it, but they're so interrelated with each other, I felt that to separate them, you know, it would be disjointed and hard to understand. So, with that, again, the public money, the TIF, the contributions from the city that we worked out the last year or so go into improving Harney Street from 10th to 8th Street, improving 8th Street from the newly constructed Harney to Farnham, from establishing sidewalks and pedestrian plaza corridor along Harney, both sides of the extended Harney, providing sidewalks along the west side of 8th Street, providing sidewalks and pedestrian ways on the south side of Farnham, and then also providing sidewalks on the east side of 10th Street. Plus, there's enhancements and modifications to the traffic signals. There are on-street parking. We're improving the streetscape generally in all those different locations. There are installation and upgrades of various utilities, gas mains, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, power, et cetera. Obviously, as we saw... In this particular drawing, you can see now, you know, a lot of this is undeveloped with the parking garage here and the other building here, so all of this infrastructure has to really be installed and put in with this particular project.
Larry, will the access to the parking be both on Farnham and Harney Street, then?
I believe the access to the parking is along Farnham Street.
Just Farnham.
Farnham and 8th.
Farnham and 8th.
Yes. So, yes, we really want Harney to be pedestrian-activated, so the cars, for purposes of parking, really would be on the Farnham and the 8th Street side to avoid interference with that. So, the total public improvement cost is about $12 million. That's excluding the parking garage. The parking garage is about $14.5 million. That is a city asset. The city expressed its interest from the onset that they wanted to construct, own, and manage and operate the parking facility. It is for the benefit of the public generally, as well as this particular project, but it is an asset of the city and one that they were interested in operating and owning and constructing, for that matter. The total project costs are $105 million, which includes that $24 million of contribution from the city in the sense of the parking garage. We call the parking garage a contribution since the city continues to own, manage, and operate that asset, and the additional $9 million towards the infrastructure costs. The developer's source and use of funds on its side of the ledger is $81 million that they're putting into this particular development. The projected valuation is approximately $61 million based upon the full build-out, and that was based upon a market analysis that they commissioned the developer did in determining what they think the fair market value of this Phase 1A. And when I talk about the TIF right now, it's really the Phase 1A property as the other parts of this development or phases come on board. We'll be back here. Now, the major expense, though, is today with the extension of Harney and the construction of 8th Street and that pedestrian plaza, and the demolition of the two major structures on the ConAgra site. So, down the road, there will be probably other TIF opportunities. They won't probably be like this particular one, but each part of the project or phase will be on its own merits, and we'll come back to you from time to time. As far as job creation, we think with Phase 1A, there's about 60 to 80 full-time employment opportunities there with the retail and commercial aspects of the development. We think in the construction, there's a job creation of about 1,900 to 2,100 jobs during construction that will be needed. There's a possibility, just for your knowledge, that down the road, we may have an application or an enhanced employment area if an occupation tax is desired down the road. That's not before you today at all. And the TIF request that we have is $11 million, and it's important to note that that's only 14% of the total overall costs of this particular project.
Larry, can I interrupt you there on that one?
Sure.
Because you said something there. I want to make sure I understand. What had a valuation of $61 million?
Just the Phase 1A.
And that's just apartments only?
Just the apartments only. Yeah, plus the retail. So, the parking garage is obviously tax exempt. That's not included in there.
Okay. But the full Phase 1 valuation will be north of $61 million, obviously, then?
Yes.
Right? Because $11 million of TIF financing on just $61 million is almost 20% of the cost.
Right. The whole project's $105 million.
Okay. And that's all the entire phase?
That's all Phase 1A, including, remember, Lot 10 includes the plaza space on Harney, so I've got a...
Plus the garage.
Plus the garage. Yeah, so...
So, it's 81, and then you take the 11 off, it's 70.
Right. Yes. So, 81 plus the 11 is the 71 million. Yes. And so that's this area here as 1A, Phase 1A. So, we believe that this meets all of the requirements of the Community Development Law and, of course, meets the goals of the master plan with the extension of the grid to the Riverfront. And, you know, Bridgette may have some items to add as well, but I at least wanted to go through what our analysis is. It comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the TIF Committee, of course, and with that, I'm happy to answer questions on either aspect of it, the preliminary plat or the TIF matters. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Bridgette and see if she has anything to add. You're welcome to my exhibits.
Bridgette Hadley with City Planning. I basically concur with what Larry has presented as far as the TIF project and the components of the project. It has gone through the TIF Committee, has been vetted to meet the Community Development Law and comply with the TIF guidelines. And as he was saying, the 14% is calculated on the 81 million for the Phase 1A, which is the mixed use of the multifamily retail and office. And I think that is all I wanted to add, so we appreciate and ask for your approval.
Thank you, Bridgette. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions?
You might have to go up for this, but if you could send us copies through the planning department, it'd be nice, of your drawings.
We'll do that.
Would you like to sign them, please?
Hey, Larry, I've got a question for you. Larry?
Yes, sorry.
Hey, do you know, is it anticipated that they're going to change Farnham past 10th Street or Harney Street into two-way traffic, or is it going to, at this point, stay as it is?
I believe it's going to stay as it is. I know there was talk about that. That might be a better question for Public Works.
Okay. Farnham, I think, is two-way. Is it 10th, is that the question?
West.
West.
Oh, west, oh, yeah, okay.
Yes. I know that we talked about it once. I don't know, maybe that's a question for Ryan Haas. Ryan, if you...
Ryan Haas at the Public Works Department. Can you repeat that?
Yeah. West of 10th on Harney and Farnham. Will that change to a two-way traffic, or...
Not in conjunction with the improvements that would be provided with this project. We accounted for the potential for Harney to be changed to two-way west of 10th Street in the traffic study as a kind of a what-if scenario, but there are no plans for that at this time.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan.
I have maybe a question for Brad. Brad, if you can. Obviously, this is a large-scale project, screening would be great for the area, very, very supportive of the concept here. But obviously, in a scale like this, you often wonder where the demand's going to come from. Did you do a market research study to make sure that there was enough demand in the future for completing this development?
Yes, we have. We completed a...
Brad, will you state your name and address again? I'm sorry.
No problem. Brad Soderwall, Heinz Interests. Our Chicago office is at 444 West Lake Street, Suite 2400.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, yes, we completed a third-party study, and they gave us an analysis of the apartment market, and it concurs that this is a viable development. In addition, our own internal resources through our investment committee came out, and they did their own assessment. Obviously, we're investing our own capital in this project, and so we're very keen on that being a good investment. So, we look both internally and externally and have confirmed that, yes, this is a very viable and exciting project and a tremendous opportunity.
And absorption will be fairly quick?
375 units will take some time. I think, you know, our assumptions is that it will take probably close to two years to get absorbed, up to our 90%, 95% threshold. So, it'll take some time, but that's part of the end writing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Eric, do you wish to add anything?
I guess specifically for Agenda Item Number 5, River Crossing, Phase 1A, TIF redevelopment project, the city recommends approval.
I'm of approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Agenda Item Number 11.
Yeah, specifically for the preliminary plat and expansion of the ACI-1 overlay district. I'm not going to add a lot, other than the fact that the development team has been definitely in great coordination with all city departments, and we've met with them a number of times to work through some of the issues before us. And, you know, we look forward to continued cooperation with them. I just want to point out, there is a request for a waiver of lot frontage specific for Outlet A and B, which is on the east side of the site that contains a portion of the lake, and that is acceptable. So, that being said, the city recommends approval of the waiver of Section 53-84D lot frontage, approval of the expansion of the ACI-1 overlay district, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 11 conditions listed in your recommendation report being addressed with or prior to submission of a final plat.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion for the approval of the waiver of Sections 53, 8, 4D lot frontage, approval of the expansion of the ACI-1 overlay district, and approval of preliminary plat subject to the 11 conditions in the department report being addressed prior to submission of the final plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Brad, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Moving on, Agenda Item Number 7, KC-3-18-283. Applicant, Planning Department on behalf of the city of Omaha. Request: Approval of the disposal of city-owned property under Community Development Law. Location: 2807 Spalding Street, 3712, 3714, 3811, 3821, and 3922 North 19th Street, 1823 Pratt Street, 2857 Manderson Street, 2528 Sprague Street, 5813 North 29th Street, and 2522 Maple Street. Are you handling this, Eric? All right, maybe we hear from the city.
Sure. This request is for the disposal of 11 parcels totaling approximately 55,000 square feet in size. The intention would be to sell these to, or dispose to Habitat for Humanity for future development of single-family residences. Is the policy of the city to surplus and dispose of unneeded public property, and this request is consistent with the Nebraska Community Development Law.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are there any proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Now we'll have the individual recommendation.
The city recommends approval.
All right. Again, any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete? Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Eight. This was removed from the consent agenda. It's KC twelve-eighteen-two-sixty-eight. Applicant, Sean Negus. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Stone Arch Creek, a subdivision located outside the city limits with waivers to Section fifty-three-eight-four-D lot frontage, Section fifty-three-nine-three street surfacing, and Section fifty-three-nine-nine sidewalks. Property is located in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location: One thirty-nine oh-nine North Sixty-Fourth Plaza. Sean, may we hear from the applicant, I guess you are?
Yep. Sean Negus, currently homeless, but residing in my friend's basement at eight oh one Sunset Drive, Fort Calhoun, Nebraska. Today, I'm asking for a waiver of paving on the west-hand side of the property located at one three nine zero nine North Sixty-Fourth Plaza. This property is located almost one mile north of Northern Hills Drive, which is approximately a half-mile from the county line. North of Northern Hills Drive is all gravel for that almost mile of, of roadway before my property. And, so that being said also, North Sixty-Fourth Plaza is a, a, it's a private drive, it's, it's not a dedicated city street, and essentially doesn't really make any logical sense to put paving when you have to travel that kind of distance before you get to that area. Also, I've actually brought one of the neighbors who is probably a majority property owner along that roadway, and essentially, he would vouch for the fact that it doesn't make sense, nor would they like it for a country-living type of area. Also, that expense-wise, it would be upwards of seventy thousand dollars to put that paving down, which is really unaffordable in, in my wanting to develop this project for my personal house. Also, to the south of my property, there was a new residence that was just built and is occupied since June, and they were not required to bring any paving up in that area also.
Can you point that out on the map there for us?
That is right here, it's, it's directly south, it's about a ten-acre parcel, and mine's about eleven acres. But that's a brand-new house right there, and that...
Just completed in June, you say?
Yep, and it was completed and, and permitted to occupy in June.
Was there an existing building on that property? The house that just got completed?
I believe there was like a, like a shed or something on that, on that bill, on that property. I'm also asking for a waiver to not consider this a special-use permit because the, there isn't going to be a significant amount of grading. The grading that is going to occur is, is really the removal of, for the dirt where the foundation is going to be, which is, is, you know, done on every single house and, and when it's built. And unless it's some massive, massive structure, it's not required to have a grading permit. And then also, the, the slopes within the building envelope I'm asking for are, all the slopes are less than seventeen percent, and the tree removal is less than a half-acre, you know, compared to the entire property, which is solid, I mean, solid trees, which obviously I, I enjoy, that's why I purchased that property, so. I guess I'm just asking for, for some consideration to, to make an approval on this, to move forward administratively. One, my timeframe and, and living in my friend's house is, you know, great and all, but, you know, not, not the same as having your own place. Not that that should be the, you know, the main reason why, but logically, this does, what they're asking for makes sense in our city, but, but so outside the realm of the city, it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. I wouldn't be opposed that if, in the future, it was developed, I wouldn't ever be opposed to a paving district. It just, right now, makes, makes no logical sense, and it would just essentially be a extreme expense that, that I really just, I couldn't afford to, to do.
So would you not do it if you were, if you had to put that concrete in, would you not build your, your home there then?
It essentially would take a, a large portion of the money that I would need to spend to build the house on it. So I, I don't, I don't think it would be feasible to, to be able to do it, no.
You already own the land?
I do.
Did you consult anyone, anyone at the city planning before you bought the land?
Uh, yes, I did. I had a, well, I, I consulted with, this is my engineer, Doug, with Thompson, Drees, and Dorner, and I had consulted if this land would be buildable. I believe it was an ALTA survey, is what they called it, on the property to make sure that it would be able to be built upon. Other than that, just going through the processes, I've, I've been on the, you know, the wrong side of, of planning before, and I'm trying to do everything right, so as soon as I was able to start getting my plans together, I, I put in for, you know, the subdivision of this property and, and all that, all, you know, everything that comes with that, and I, I didn't, I guess, I didn't think it was going to be an issue, being that it's eleven and a quarter acres, but, you know.
Sean, I, I guess I, did you say you did consult with the city planning department before you purchased this? You, you kind of started to say that as well, I talked to my engineer.
So, originally, I had an ALTA survey done with the purchase of the property, and I guess that, I was under the assumption then that that was meaning that it could be built upon. I, I didn't, I didn't take it any further at that time. I knew I wasn't ready to, you know, get started building or anything like that at that time. And so, I mean, technically, no, I didn't at that time. I, I hired Thompson, Drees, and Dorner in, was it September? I believe September, to start the process.
All right.
So.
Any additional questions? Sean, did you want Doug to speak, have anything to say, or?
Yes, if you, if you guys have any questions.
Doug, do you want to speak?
Doug Kelner with TD Two, one oh eight three-six Old Mill Road. I'm only recently become involved with this project, but I, I believe that the people involved in it believed that this would be an administrative-type deal because of the way it is. It's an easement that runs up through, adjacent to the property on a private drive. It's not a public street with a right-of-way. So logically, you would think that there was a, that the gravel road would remain that, rather than needing paving in that short section. I probably would have advised him to meet with the city, yes, I understand where you're going. But that being said, I am surprised that there is a requirement for paving on this location too, because it is a private drive and a private, not in an outlot, it's not in right-of-way, it's just on an easement.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Any questions for Doug? Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Come forward, give your name and address, sir.
Okay, my name's Don Zeisler. I live on one thirty-three oh-three North Sixty-Fourth Plaza, which is right straight south of where Sean is.
You want to point on the map there where you live?
I gotta have help.
I'm sorry.
I love right here, right where it's making that corner.
Okay.
And I don't have no problem with that not being paved. I mean, we're, he's, he's a mile away from it, and neighbors that all live on this road, we all get together and we put grindings on it and take good care of it. And I mean, it's not muddy, it's not, it's actually in better shape than the county road is. And I'd love to see him build up there, and I understand he's not wanting to spend seventy-five thousand dollars for a chunk of concrete that actually goes nowhere. And I don't think, I can't speak for anybody else, but I, I've talked to him, and nobody else thinks it's necessary. He said, "Keep it short and sweet."
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions, before we hear from Eric? Okay, Eric?
Sure. So, the city did have some email correspondence with representatives of Thompson, Drees, and Dorner going back a few months, when we indicated that the expectation would be that paving would be necessary along the western frontage of the sites. You know, after some of those emails, Doug did come in and, and speak with us. You know, it, it's difficult when you have other properties in the area that have developed over time, and the proper street, sewers, infrastructure hasn't been put in place. But Chapter Fifty-three is, is pretty clear to the point that when, when properties become buildable lots, when they develop, that that infrastructure is important. Now, with this being in the North Hills, we would support a reduction in pavement width from twenty-five feet to twenty-two feet, no curb and gutter, no sidewalks, those would all be acceptable. You know, but the expectation is that, you know, you need to start somewhere in providing that infrastructure. We have other areas throughout our jurisdiction that, you know, haven't put in the improvements in streets that are up to city standards, and it becomes problems over time with the expectations that the city needs to maintain those and repair them, and I know there's a private easement here, and, you know, the residents may be, you know, taking care of that at this time, but by creating a buildable lot, you know, the expectation is that the city would, would need those improvements to go in. As far as the home to the immediate south, it did receive a building permit because it was determined that that had structures on site, and it was considered a buildable lot with buildable rights, so it did not need to go through the plating process. If it, if it would have needed to go through the plating process, it would be the same recommendation that we would need the street improved along their frontage. Additionally, with this being in the North Hills overlay, there are additional regulations due to the environmentally sensitive features in that area. It's, depending on the amount of grading and, you know, the, the slopes, the grade of the slopes associated with those sites, as well as tree canopy removal, there's quite, there's quite a few regulations that dictate whether it needs a special-use permit or not. With this submittal, we did not receive that information. I know the applicant did provide us a little bit of information, I, I believe, yesterday. You know, I can't, we can't make the determination based on that whether a special-use permit is needed. So that is the primary reason for the layover, so that we can get that, the grading plan, soil volume calculations, and tree canopy analysis into us. You know, if we get that information, we'd be supportive of putting this back on next month, but, you know, our expectation is that there would be a denial of the request to not provide the street surfacing. So with that being said, our official recommendation is layover to allow submittal of a grading plan, soil volume calculations, and tree canopy analysis and removal plan.
Eric, with that property owner to the south, because they had buildable rights already in place, what in the future would trigger them to have to pave the road outside of their property? Or will, if Sean builds his road, will that always just be a road to nowhere, because it won't connect through there?
So you're saying the immediate property to the south?
Yep.
When would that ever need to pave?
Yep.
A street? If they removed all structures from the site, that would kick in the plating requirements? Even though it, if it once had building rights and the structures were removed?
Then you would lose the buildable rights?
Yes. Or in a situation where they were splitting off part of the property to build another home, that would basically kick in the requirements to go through the plating process. You know, and just a quick note on the administrative plat process, or not, the city doesn't typically process administrative plats in areas such as these that have never been platted before. And, you know, for that reason, we, we don't see it fit, and it, it comes up a lot. We don't see that this site is appropriate for an administrative subdivision, plus along with the, the street requirements.
This is one of those topics that, you know, it's difficult, I understand the city's position on it, but I like to think in terms, I like to think that I'm somewhat pragmatic in the way I think. And when I look at that general area and I see no other driveways or drives or concrete in front of the structures there, knowing that the only way that they'll have to is if they take down some of the existing structures and have to replat it and some of those things, just, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to require this piece of concrete that won't connect anything. And I say that just because it, it, it just, you know, I, I feel, you know, I had to make a comment to it, but I understand the city code and the statutes within the city code require it, but it just doesn't make sense to me. I would certainly recommend a layover to see if there can be some form of compromise done, and I know that the position of the city is, is for the concrete, probably not. But I'd like to at least see if there's some form of compromise that could be accomplished somehow, some way, but, yeah, it's a difficult one, because I understand both sides very much.
Yeah, I worry, I mean, the, the neighborhood of the south, if they just built their residents, I mean, when are they going to tear that down, and it's a tough situation for them.
Any other questions, comments? Eric, do you want to give the cities, well, you have, but, okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggott?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to layover approved.
Okay, moving on, Agenda Item Number Ten, KC ten-eighteen-two-seven-one. KC twelve-eighteen-two-seven-two. Applicant, Scott Iverson. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Evergreen Acres, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR. Location: Southwest of one hundred and thirty-second Street and Bennington Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, my name is Scott Iverson, currently reside at five-two-one-two North One-Fifty-eighth Avenue. And, yeah.
Jeff Elliott, one-seven-zero-zero-seven Marcy Street, here to represent Scott and Michelle Iverson. Scott and Michelle purchased this piece of property some months ago, and the location, I use this map here, so. Bennington Road is right here, one hundred and thirty-second Street is here. I've colored in in yellow the nine-point-seven-seven acres that they own. So their desire is to put one... Um, so their desire is to put one single-family home on the property. So when they, uh, came in to get a building permit, they found out that they need to uh, rezone it, plat it, and so that's where we're here today. We've created a, a final plat, uh, we're asking for rezoning from AG to DR. Um, and, uh, we found out through the staff recommendation report that, uh, there is a dam site located in the vicinity and actually will touch the property. So I, I have contacted the NRD, Amanda Grant, and actually that's where I received this drawing from. And so you can see here, this is a, a future dam site, they do have this programmed probably twenty years in the future, so twenty forty-two or something like that, but, but it is programmed, it, it most likely will happen. Uh, the dashed white line here is the top of dam elevation. So the NRD, uh, would ask Scott and Michelle to, um, place the southerly part of their property in an outlot so that it's set aside for a future purchase. Uh, typically, they, they purchase to the top of dam, so, um, there is, on the northerly part of the site, it's, it's a high hill, so a, a house structure could sit up on the hill, and in the future, if Scott and Michelle are still there, they'd have a nice view over, over NRD pond.
Somebody else maintains.
Right.
How many acres, how many acres can it contain within that, in that white shaded, white outlined area?
To the south, where the NRD would own?
Where the house will, where his house would?
Where the house would sit, I would, we haven't mapped it yet, but I would say it's about four to five acres.
Still four to five.
Right. Right.
Okay.
And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that wish to speak? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments? Eric, may we hear from the city?
Sure. Yeah, during our review, uh, we realized the, the NRD dam information, you know, based on the expected needs of the NRD, uh, we had reached out to the NRD and they, they, you know, thought it best fit to, to have the area that they intend to purchase incorporated within an outlot. I know it's pretty far out in the future, but it only makes sense when there is, uh, that known entity going in. So, you know, as, as appreciate that the applicant has reached out to them and continued those coordinations, you know, we are recommending approval of the rezoning and the preliminary plat, but for the need of that to be placed, that southern portion to be placed in an outlot, um, we are recommending layover of the final plat. Um, you know, that outlot will not have street frontage when it comes back in, so we'd have to add that to the, to the agenda, but that could be supported. Um, so that being said, the official recommendation is approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the two conditions in the report, and layover the final plat to allow the applicant to coordinate with the NRD.
Hey, do we have a mo, do we have a question?
Um, when, when you've talked with the NRD, has this even been designed yet?
No.
So they're ga, they're pretty much guessing at this point on what the dam height would be?
This drawing was done by HDR, so there was some level of engineering done.
Just preliminary engineering.
Um, there is, you can see an elevation for the, uh, top of dam of eleven thirty-four, but, but you're right, Dave, it's, it hasn't been finally designed. It's probably.
So, let me ask you, I mean, you've worked with them before. So in a situation like this, you know, you've got an applicant that's trying to get a, a piece of property written usable now, and we insert this process into it, how long does it take to get the NRD to give enough definitive information to us or to use so that you could actually create an outlot that works?
Really, we have the information we need.
You do?
Um, with this elevation and talking to Amanda, she says, if you would, if you set that outlot line on that elevation, um, they would accept that. And so she said she'd turn that around right of way. Um, our surveyor's out there today, actually, and so I think by Monday's submittal, we could get this final plat back in.
Okay.
And get it on your agenda next, next meeting, um, if you feel that's necessary, uh, to see that. Um, one other thing I didn't note, I didn't note is that, uh, Scott is dedicating right-of-way along Bennington Road for future roadway purposes or widening purposes, so, um, happy to cooperate.
And so I guess what I'm kind of leading to is that, so, uh, a layover of a month, given what you've just said, is really probably not, not an extreme hardship to be able to get this to move forward. You give, we give you the, uh, approval of the, the first two items and then layover the final, so.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of rezoning from AG to DR, and approval of the preliminary, excuse me, the preliminary plat, subject to two conditions in the staff report, and layover the final plat to allow applicant to coordinate with the NRD for the exact location of the future dam.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote, please?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, agenda item number twelve was on for consent, it was taken off, we'll begin with that, case C-ten dash eighteen dash two seven five, C-twelve dash eighteen dash two seven six, applicant Lauren Johnson, Celebrity Homes Omaha, request preliminary plat approval of Lakeview one sixty-eight, a subdivision located outside the city limits with a waiver of section fifty-three-nine-nine sidewalks, along with rezoning from AG to R-four. Location southwest of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight and Ida Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Mark Johnson, one-hundred-and-fourteen forty, West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Uh, with me today also is Aaron Grody from Lampard Nielsen Associates, the engineers for the project. Uh, before you today is a request for approval, a recommendation for, excuse me, approval for the preliminary plat for Lakeview one sixty-eight as well as the rezoning, she fired it nice and bright, uh, the two-hundred-and-sixty, or fifty-six lot, single-family subdivision with eight outlots. Um, it is a two-phase project, just a, kind of a rough line here, with the south phase going first, and that's the piece here, uh, this square here is where a current OPPD substation sits, uh, and then the second phase, uh, is this northern portion here, which abuts uh, the intersection on the north, the southwest inner, uh, corner of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight and Ida. Um, we appreciate the planning department and, uh, Public Works input and conversations we've had over the last couple of months on this project. Um, happy to continue to work through a couple of those open items, uh, on the recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you or, uh, this gentleman has, so, with that. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents?
Yes.
Okay, come forward, give your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Newgriff, I live at sixty-five twenty-five North one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street, and I received a letter from the planning department last week, saying that there's going to be a new addition across the street from my home. And I don't have any objection to the addition across because it's progress, you don't stop that. I mean, I prefer it to be a farm field, but it isn't, so, that's not for that, but, anyway, the road that they're proposing to, to get in and out of the subdivision.
Tom, excuse me for, will you turn that one-hundred-and-eighty degrees there? There you go. I think that's how she sits.
Okay. Anyway, this driveway going into the subdivision is directly across from my driveway. I mean, straight across, and I'm being told by the planning board that it has to be at least an eighth of a mile from the, from the corner of one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth and Ida, which I can understand it has to be at least that far. I don't know why it has to be directly across from my driveway, you know? Because it's going to be a T-intersection anyway, you know, they aren't going to drive into my driveway, they're going to go either north or south. Uh, and when they're doing that, it's going to take me a while to get out of my driveway at certain times of the day, you know? And I was just wondering if perhaps they could move the, the, the road maybe a hundred-and-fifty feet to the south. That would be at least what they wanted, and, and still not bother me, it would be between myself and my neighbor because he's, his driveway is about three-hundred feet from mine, so. That's what I'd like to see happen is move that driveway or move that, uh, entrance to the subdivision to the south, perhaps a hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay, that was it?
That's it.
Okay. One, one question for you, when you pull.
Yeah, pardon?
Go, go ahead.
Well, she just mentioned, that's my wife, uh, that the density of that housing, there's going to be two-hundred-and-fifty-six homes there on an eighty-acre plot, and that's a lot of people coming and going, you know? And plus, there's going to be a school right to the north of that, and there's just an awful lot of traffic that's going to happen there, so. I feel my request is reasonable, unless I'm told otherwise.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Are there any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. May we hear from Eric?
Sure.
Do you want to address Tom's points?
Yeah. So, uh, the access point off of one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street into the development is located at a quarter-mile south of Ida Street. The Omaha master plan calls for three main through connections as the arterials meet, quarter-mile, half-mile, and then quarter-mile on the other side, quarter-mile, half-mile, three-quarter mile, basically, if you look at the mile stretch. Um, so the city is, um, pretty set of where those locations need to be, and if we need to call up Ryan from Public Works to give any input, we can definitely do so. Um, but as far as spacing requirements, when there's traffic signals, um, you know, unless, you know, in very rare circumstances, maybe if there's a large drainageway creek, um, very rarely do we deviate from those set locations, and, and something like this, we would view that intersection at one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth as, as the appropriate location. If, if your property or the other properties on the east side of one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth were ever to develop, um, the expectation would be that the, the street connection would go at that quarter-mile location as well. And so just for us to be able to plan development, orderly growth, um, you know, that's one of the items in the master plan that we, um, that we need to adhere to. I don't know if, I'll call up Ryan Haas if he wants to add anything else for that.
Ryan Haas with the Public Works Department. Just to kind of echo the things that Eric said, the, the ideal spacing for the street network along those arterials is, is equally spaced at the quarter, half, and three-quarter. Um, if you look at the aerial here, any deviation away from this point where we're recommended, where the master plan would require the public street connection, if we move it south, we're going to get closer to, um, other driveways, neighboring driveways. Um, the fact that we're locating the, the street connection at or very close to this driveway location, um, that, that's, there's benefits to that from a traffic engineering standpoint, where you start to separate and have short offsets of those conflict points, you can have, um, create opportunities for, for additional hazards that wouldn't otherwise be there if you align those, uh, the driveway with the intersection. If we start to move it to the south, now you start to create places where maybe some of the left turn, opposing left turns would overlap, if someone slows down to turn into their driveway while someone's turning a, a northbound left turn into Lakeview one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, um, there, there'd be opportunity for head-on collision, so, I, I understand, I certainly sympathize with anyone who has a driveway on, on that stretch of one-hundred-and-sixty-eight, there's, there's no shortage of, of traffic growth out there with all the developments that have been approved, but with or without Lakeview one sixty-eight, that, that's going to be the case regardless. So, based on the, the master plan requirements, based on how it happens to align, I, we would recommend strongly against, uh, deviating from that. Um, you know, to Eric's point, just as a, as an example, there's a substantial drainageway here, uh, on the north edge at the quarter-mile point west of one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth, um, they're, they're incurring a significant expense to keep that access at the quarter-mile point, uh, to get the color there despite the drainageway, so.
I'm guessing that's not going to be signaled, right?
Well, it won't be signaled on day one.
On day one, that's why my question was going.
You know, as, as with any street, we have to, we have to set it up for the potential that, um, in response to future traffic conditions with the side street traffic, that we at least set it up where if signalization becomes necessary, that it, it will function well.
Tom? Would you stand up again?
Yes.
What, what they're kind of saying there is, if, if you look south on one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street down toward Dodge, you saw it just happened between Dodge and, and, and Blondo, okay? Anything that wasn't in line with those locations that, that are being shown ends up with an island in the way. And so what happens, what would happen in the future on your, um, your access would be, if it isn't located at that point, you're, you'll, you'll end up having to go north out of there, to wherever you went, and you'd only be able to get there from the south. Whereas if it stays at that point and in the future a light gets put there, you'd have immediate access to go over whichever direction you want. So, I, I think in the long run, the amount of traffic that you're talking about when it gets there, that's what your opportunity will be versus if you were isolated there with just your own access.
You also talked about the future that...
Tom, would you give your name and address again? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Tom Newgriff at sixty-five twenty-five North one-hundred-and-sixty-eighth Street. Uh, there's nothing to say that there's ever going to be a, a road built there, I mean, if I sold that property, it might be used as a residence or a developer might purchase it. If a developer purchased it, he wouldn't necessarily have to have the driveway there into his subdivision, he could have it, you know, quarter-mile down, you know, or a one-off of, there's also a sub, uh, sub-street, uh, off a hundred, off of Ida now, so, there's just no guarantee that, that they have to have that street going right in there.
I think the point that Dave made on, if you offset that, is a, a really important point, that you could end up with only a ride-in and a ride-out access down the road. And, uh, if you leave that intersection adjacent to the one across the street, you're going to be much better off down the road, Tom. And any future, if, if your area, your land and anybody else next to you would sell for some other future use, they're going to still be stuck with that same location, which is where it should be, which is where we're showing it right now.
So let's, I don't agree, but I understand what you're saying.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. In, in respect to the density that Tom was asking about, although yes, two-hundred-and-fifty-six residential lots is, is a lot more dense than what is currently there, um, you know, that is well within the density allowance of, of the low-density residential that's designated for this area. You know, we're, we're looking at less than four units per acre, you know, low-density residential, you know, sometimes can get as high as fourteen units per acre. So, uh, while it is, is more dense than, than what is, what is currently there, as it's not developed, you know, it, it's, it's well within. Um, so I'll continue on with my recommendations.
Yes, go ahead.
If that's okay.
Yep.
Um, there is a request for a sidewalk waiver specifically along the west edge of HWS Cleveland Boulevard, which makes up the western boundary of this site. Due to the existing Flanagan Lake Trail Network, as well as the trail connections that are proposed and additional ones that will be required as part of our recommendation, um, the city is acceptable for that waiver of sidewalks on the west side only, so I wanted to point that out because that'll be part of the recommendation. Um, I don't think there's anything else I need to state. So, the city recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R-four, approval of the waiver to section fifty-three-nine-nine sidewalks of the Omaha Municipal Code for the west side of HWS Cleveland Boulevard only, and approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the thirteen conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
5399 sidewalks of the Omaha Municipal Code for the west side of HWS Cleveland Boulevard only, and approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 13 conditions outlined in the department's recommendation report.
Second. Do we have a motion and a second? Lisa, will you record the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Moving on, agenda item number 16, Case C8-18-281, applicant Mark Sanford, request approval of a special use permit to allow body and fender repair services in a GC district. Property is located in an ACI II overlay district. Location, 70, 76 Maple Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Representing the property owner, current owner of the, the building, they are requesting or desiring to build an addition to this building. They currently are an automobile repair shop and they don't really do fender bending, banging. That auto repair and fender repair is kind of over-exaggerated, but it's a typical repair and they do oil changes, et cetera. The site is difficult because the building itself is already all the way over to its eastern boundary. And we tried to develop the west side of the property for more parking or at least parking area. Inside the addition, which is to the rear of the existing facility, they have two service bays, which requires four parking stalls per bay. That's why we show, I show nine parking stalls in the back. Currently, they have angled parking on the west side. I showed some more angled parking again, but I would keep the eight stalls in the back and put a handicap parking up in front. I know that the planning department doesn't like the angled parking as much. The existing building has an estimating bay and currently their service bays are to the right of that estimating bay. And they would keep the estimating bay and put in a alignment rack and a paint booth to help them support their repair area. This is a parts area and the two service bays in this location. We could develop the handicap area and do the parking so it's not angled. And currently, they pull into this estimating bay, actually, they park all the way along the front of this building and we are creating a buffer in the front or landscaping in front. And in the rear, there is an alley between the, the existing site and the residential site to the north. And half of that could be considered buffer. It does have an elevation change. The property to the north is lower than the existing site, but if we take 10 feet of the alley and 20 feet of the existing site, they're 30 feet away from the center line of the alley. They're 40 feet away from the residential property. And that's the way we're looking at it right now. We would consider redesigning it if, if we could come to an agreement with the planning department and have the proper number of stalls in the rear. Probably would require a waiver of some of the buffer because we are building into what would be considered a buffer. But right now, that area, that alley is very overgrown, kind of creates its own natural buffer today. But we tried to make the best, you know, silk purse out of a sow's ear here, so. That's what we're looking at, looking for approval or support.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
I, I do have just a question. So, are you going to do collision repair business out of this?
It is collision repair. It's called, their new name will be Omaha Collision Center.
So, they do collision repair now?
They do, they don't do any of that right now. It's mostly mechanical work right now.
Okay. Do you have to be licensed to do collision repair?
I'm not aware of, I'd have to check into that mic. I'm not sure.
When you say mostly mechanical work, are you doing collision repair now?
No, they're not.
None?
Not that I know of. Minor, not that you...
No, no replacement?
They're just doing service repair right now.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Mark, how do they get those parking places, those three parking places in front, how do they get back out of there? And the way it was, I understand that there was space in front, so they get back...
Today, yeah. Today, everybody's backing out onto Maple Street.
So, how do they, if, if this was go forward, how does one get out of one of those parking places without backing into the street?
Well, the, currently, they would pull these, the car forward and up and have to maneuver and then turn the car to, to the south and reorient it.
I mean, we, we talked about this. Obviously, in the, the pre-meeting today and you've seen the recommendation report and know what the city's recommendation is.
Yes.
And there's a lot of challenges with this site and a lot of things that would still need to be done in order to bring it to compliance, if it's even possible. I mean, there's, your best-case scenario, in my opinion, is probably a layover to try to continue to work with the city. But there is no guarantee that it's going to work out either.
I, I agree. We did meet with the city prior to this. I didn't just come up with this and out of the, you know, blue sky. So, I, we did meet with the city. We talked about the buffer area and the parking in the rear. I knew the angled parking was difficult. And we talked about the, the landscaping in front would definitely be an improvement. And the building itself, obviously, they're looking to do some extensive work to remodel the front, clean up the side, of course, and then do a new fence around the, the property to capture that area and to also screen that off. So, they'd be open to a layover if we can work that out.
Your client would be open to a layover?
I, when we looked at the street-level view of, of the building here, there was a sign that said auto repair, but on, there was on a, one of the doors, it said body repair.
And that's, I've been told that they just, do you want to speak to that? I, I do have the owners here.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Come on up. I just want to make sure we're getting the absolute straight story here.
My name is Lida Yubi. I'm the daughter of the owner. I'm helping with English.
Okay.
Address is 18536.
Need your address, please.
Yeah. 18536 Pope Circle.
Okay.
So, the business my dad does is he, every now and then purchases a car from the auction. And mostly, it's Tribiana's is one of the cars I drive. He fixes it, like, not collision repair, but more like he, on his free time when he doesn't have anything, he for, like, for my brother, or my sister, he fixed up the car. So, that is the portion of, he doesn't do any fender, he doesn't do any banging or anything, no paint, like, he just buys the part and squeezes, or puts it in place. I don't know much about body repairs, you know? So, as far as I know, there's no, like, painting or fender or anything.
He's not making income off of, off of body repair?
No. He's mostly, like, he's done it for my car and his car and my sister's.
Okay.
So, but that's how it has been done.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other proponents that wish to speak? Are there any opponents that wish to speak? Seeing then, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions before we hear from the city? Eric, may we hear from the city's recommendation?
Sure, yeah. So, obviously, the request before us is for a special use permit for body and fender repair services. You know, just based on signage or what we had seen, we were under the impression that some of that had been taking place. If, if that's not the case, then good. You know, there shouldn't be any body and fender taking place on the site right now. It should only be auto repair. That being said, the proposal before us would, well, I guess, let me start. The site is approximately 12,600 square feet. There's an existing building that's 2,100 square feet. I believe the proposed addition to the north of the existing building is a little over 2,800 square feet. So, you're, you know, you're approaching about 5,000 square feet on the site with, you know, only, you know, less than a, you know, I guess, a little more than a quarter of an acre in size. You know, we have, obviously, there's, there's several items that are non-conforming to the, to the zoning code regulations as it stands today. And we appreciate the, you know, the proposed remodel and improvement of the site, and we're all for that, but it's got to work out. And we have concerns about the size of the site in relation to the size of, you know, the proposed development. You know, with the, with, let me go through it here, with the number of bays, the, the city code requires four onsite parking stalls per repair bay. When you have two repair bays, one alignment bay, one estimating bay, and a paint booth, we don't factor the paint booth as, as a repair bay, but we're still looking at four repair bays, which require 16 total parking stalls on site. So, with the, Mark talked about the, the angled parking. You know, angled parking can have a reduced drive aisle, but it needs a way to egress from the site. You know, you can't just come in angled parking, back out into the right-of-way, or try to maneuver around. So, the, those parking stalls aren't compliant as proposed. Along with the 90-degree angled parking on the northwest portion of the site, we would need a 24-foot drive aisle width so that cars can come into the site as well as cars leaving the site simultaneously. There is a buffer yard requirement on the north. Mark did mention the provision about possibly using half of the, half of the alley. You know, that's, that's something we would have to look at, but as proposed, it does not currently meet buffer yard requirements. So, there is parking within that buffer yard as well as other required landscaping. Outdoor storage is allowed accessory to body and fender, so we have to factor in the potential of having, you know, damaged vehicles that are out. We've talked about that on other sites. So, there are screening requirements. Mark mentioned a fence perhaps, but that's not currently shown on the proposal. There are future street improvements, the 72nd and Maple Street intersection. So, there is a strong possibility that at some point in the future, part of that Maple Street frontage on their south end, there might be requirements from Public Works, depending on the scope of that project. I can't speak for the, you know, the details of that project, and I don't think we have them at this time, but it's something to be factored when we're putting in landscaping and, you know, addressing that street frontage. So, with all of these items said, we do have a recommendation for denial. You know, we are willing to sit down with the, the applicant and, and go through it in details and look at other options. I, we just do have concerns, though, that in addition of this size and that many repair bays, I don't know how it can all fit. Anytime there are waivers of zoning code regulations associated with a use permit, planning board and city council have to be supportive of those waivers. We can't just bypass that use permit process and go directly to the zoning board of appeals. You know, so you'd have to be comfortable with waivers and, you know, when we're doing, you know, making a site larger or building addition larger, you know, where is the hardship or practical difficulty to be able to support that waiver? So, that being said, we are, if you want to vote on a layover so that we can sit down and discuss that, we're, we're open for that, but our official recommendation is denial.
Yeah, I believe there's a lot of obstacles to overcome. I will make a motion to deny.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Mr. Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
No.
Magid?
No.
Rose Hacker?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
A motion failed?
I didn't vote.
Oh, you want to vote, Mr. Chair?
Sure, I'll vote.
Yes.
Okay, one, two. And it still failed.
So, we've got a 3-3 vote. We'll have to entertain another motion.
Make a motion to layover for 30 days.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
No.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
Motion approved to layover.
Okay.
Thanks for consideration. Back to the drawing board.
All right.
Look.
Don't say it anymore.
All right, I think we have agenda item number 23 that was on for consent and was taken off. It's Case C14-18-264, applicant, planning board, request vacation of 57th Street, south of Haskell Street, of budding lots five and six, Schwab's third addition, along with the strip of land dedicated to the city of budding lots two, eight, and nine, Block Eight, Patterson's Park. Eric, are you handling this as the applicant?
Sure, yeah. We have representatives here from Public Works as well.
Okay.
This request is of planning board initiative vacation of 57th Street, south of Haskell. We had quite a few vacation requests on your agenda that you're aware of, and we laid over and approved some with, with the consent. This one was obviously pulled off. In this circumstance, there are five adjacent property owners. We believe that the, the process should be, that the person requesting this vacation to city right-of-way, go to all of those neighbors in an attempt to have it. There's a petition when you have more than 75% of the linear frontage of the right-of-way. You know, if you are able to obtain more than the 75% signatures from those property owners, you know, it can be placed on agenda as, it's listed as adjacent property owner. We believe that that is, is the best process for the attempt to be made in this circumstance to go through that rather than planning board initiated based on the request of one person. So, your packet has a very short memo recommending layover so that we can further analyze this, both planning, Public Works, reaching out to the person requesting it, and have further conversations.
Are you a proponent?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
But if, if you're going to lay it over, then...
Well, you're here, give your name and address.
My name's Earl Baker, 5705 Haskell Street. Are we going to review it now or should we just lay it over?
What's your position?
Yeah.
What's your position on this?
My position, I'm in favor of it. I, I live at the residence that's, you know, we're, we're petitioning. I was asked by the planning department to, uh, apply for an application for the property, so I did that. The way this all started is I was redoing my deck, and then the city inspector told me my house was too, built too close to the lot line, you know? It's, it's five foot instead of 15 foot for, uh, a right-of-way. Okay, so you, and I didn't know that, you know? I bought, I bought the house. So, then they asked me to go, I went to the zoning department. I go to the zoning department, and I got a variance, so that was fine. But, you know, it's, things aren't going to change whether we petition people or not. I mean, the only one's probably going to be, I'm going to get a signature from myself, you know? Just a couple of the people, they've, they've said that they're planning on moving and selling their properties, and so that's neither here nor there. And the, the woman that lives next door to me on the east side, she really doesn't have an interest. And I talked to her one day and, and invited her over to speak about it, and she said, and she never came over, and I see her in church, and she goes over there, I go over there, and so. It's just, you know, the way that is, you know? Everybody doesn't get along, you know? So, but, you know, as far as, I talked to my lawyer, Mike Lehan, this morning about, from a liability's perspective, because I've been taking care of this property for 32 years. And, you know, when you shovel the walk and everything, it, I don't have any insurance covering me for liability. So, in that respect... it, I don't have any insurance covering me for liability. So in that respect, I've been doing these, these things for the city of Omaha for the right-of-way properties there. And, and Mike said, well, you know, you wouldn't be held liable. But I says, you know, you're going to do the job in your best interest, or the best job you could do, but then you could have a freeze over and, and then you could get some ice, somebody could fall down and guess who they're going to come after? You know, so, and the only way I could, if they approve, if you approved the, the, where I could purchase a vacated property, then I could get that as, as property that's mine and I could get that on my homeowners insurance. Right now, I, I can't do that. That's about the extent of it, I think. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and if I could just point out, as Earl mentioned, he did go to the zoning board of appeals for waiver and was directed to, to look at the vacation. And, you know, the, it doesn't mean because of the layover that we're necessarily opposed to it or in support. We just want to look at the process a little bit further detail, so.
That's fine. That's fair. You know, that's why I said it. We want to talk about it now or next time? You let me know.
Thank you, Earl.
All right.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Lisa.
Covered it. Any opponents that wish to speak? Are all three of you going to speak? Just the one? Okay. All right. I was going to say, if you wanted to speak, you could come on down and sit in the front row, but. All right. Name and address, please.
I'm Betty Dieter at thirty-three fourteen South Fifty-sixth Street. And I, my husband and I bought that property there in nineteen seventy-nine with the understanding that eventually there would be a Fifty-seventh Street put through there, which there hasn't been, which I don't care one way or another, but I'd like to see it set aside for the street so that I can get access to my backyard because I can't from the front because there's a steep hill. And it's, if, if it isn't set aside for a street, that property back there isn't worth too much other than it's a lot to mow. And to get to my backyard, I need the access from Fifty-seventh Street, which is between Mr. Baker and, and Mrs. Seminar's houses. And it's, it's a lot to take care of, that extra property. I don't know what Mr. Baker wants it for, but it's a lot to take care of. And I can attest to that because I'm getting to be old and he's not a spring chicken either and it's, it's a lot to take care of. And right now, I've got a fence back there and there's volunteer trees and I've been maintaining both sides of the fence for several years. And, and south of me, the, the fence line down there is just a big tangle because there's all kinds of weeds and stuff growing up and vines and it's getting up into the cable wires and the O B B D wires. It'd probably be this year before the trees are up into that lot. And I think you need to think hard about taking over that, vacating that and taking it over because it's just a whole lot to take care of. And I don't think I have anything else to say, but it's just food for thought to think about it.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
Did Betty check off all the points that you guys?
The twenty-five feet of space between, behind my yard is some land that Mr. Conklin lived there that he, was, he seized this summer, gave away to the city. And if he thought that somebody was going to take it over and it wasn't going to be used for what it was intended for, he'd probably turn over in his grave.
Don't leave yet, Betty.
Okay.
I think Eric wanted to ask you a question.
Yeah, hi, hi Betty. Is your property the one with the swimming pool?
No, that was Mr. Conklin.
You're on the east side?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you currently access from Fifty-seventh Street to your backyard usually or?
Not very often, but there's, where right now I've got a dead tree in the backyard that needs to be removed. And then there's a building that I should put up a different one, but I don't know whether I will or not. But it, the old one needs to come down because it's starting to fall apart.
Okay.
And I would need access to it then.
Okay. Well, I think it's best to, to get all the interested parties together and try to have discussions further, you know, outside of this meeting. So, you know, we can always follow up with you if you, I can give you a card.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other opponents that wish to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Earl, did you want to come back up and make one?
Well, as far as, as far as somebody accessing that property.
Need your name and address.
My name is still Earl Baker and I still, I still live at fifty-seven oh five Haskell Street. Okay? Same guy.
Same guy.
All right. Well, you know, you're talking about using that property for access. Somebody going over that, that's a city of Omaha property. And what's, what's the decision on that? Somebody, if they did some destruction of the city property like that. If you had some big truck going down there, you know, they got a fence around their house, the Dieters do, and there really isn't no access there.
Okay, thank you.
Food for thought.
All right. Any questions, comments before we hear from Eric again?
I just think, just make a comment. It's just kind of the, the little side comments that we're hearing here, just give more credence to the fact that the parties that are involved need to get together and come to some sort of an agreement on how to best use this. And it's pretty obvious that it's unlikely that the city's going to extend that through anytime soon. And so the best thing to do is if everybody could sit down with, with the city staff and, and come up with the best, best solution to that and then bring that to us and then it's a done deal.
Okay. Eric, did you want to?
Just, city recommends layover.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please record the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggitt?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion, uh, laid over. Thank you.
That ends the meeting. We do have a copy of the minutes from the September meeting. We'll take a separate, um, motion on September minutes.
Move to approve the September minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Maggitt?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Uh, we'll take a motion on the October minutes.
Move to approve the October minutes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggitt?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And now the November meeting.
Motion to approve the November meeting minutes.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record, record the vote, please?
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggitt?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Motion to adjourn.
I abstain from the November.
Oh, sorry.
Minutes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn again.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you record the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Maggitt?
Yes.
Rosehacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before you guys leave, we'll elect officers next month, so just keep that in mind, you know, pre-meeting, we'll have discussion, vote also during the regular meeting on the agenda. And then also, we, originally, the planning board for January was scheduled on January second. We've moved that to January ninth. So hopefully, everybody is aware of that. Yes. Yeah, so that's been changed and then I believe Mike handed you out the schedule for next year. So, all right, thank you.
Douglas County?